I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All kinds, gracious Father in heaven, we approach thy throne and grace with humble hearts and mind, Father, of your glory and your honor, which you so deserve. We thank you, Father, for this assembly. We pray, Father, that we, as leaders of the community, can put our minds together and come up with decisions which are right and proper. Give us the wisdom to think about things and to concern the citizens of the county. Be with us, Father, as listeners, that we can listen and make decisions which are right and proper. We ask that you be with those that have chosen to protect us and serve us. These are my prayers and prayers, all in the name, amen.
All right, with that, I should have the minutes from last month's meeting. With that, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of last meeting's minutes. Motion from President, do I have a second from Levitt? Okay, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. All right. Karen, I have you next on the agenda. Okay. And John's not here today. So the next thing I have on our agenda would be the discussion about the B.O.T. agreement. Karen, Michelle, is that right? All right, commissioners, floor is yours.
At this point, I've asked Jill Seigesser to come in. And I talked to Jill Friday, I think it was. And did you come forward, Jill? Jill has worked with the B.O.T. We have talked to David Dobbin, attorney. And Jill, I think you said you're doing a Colgate, down in Park County, right now?
There's several projects that, Angela Seigesser at the Wheatley Group. There are several projects that we've been involved in. Either in the city of Charlestown right now, we work as their redevelopment staff, but in contract with them. There are two projects, we're using this build operate transfer. One is what they call Shadow Lake Development, which is building a new roadway and a new signalized intersection, railroad intersection there at 62 and mining trail out of Ridge. There's that project, they're also using it, and they're using that, they actually did a bond sale for that. They didn't use the B.O.T. process to do the financing, they didn't use the developer to do the financing, they did redevelopment bond for that. But they are also using that to do some sewer line relocation, that same process for another development, multifamily development, they're doing in Charlestown. What Commissioner Marshall had mentioned in Clarksville, Clarksville's utilized this process a number of times. The first one that we were involved in about three years ago is their public works facility that's now been completed. And the reason they went this direction is that they had, you know, your traditional process, you hire someone to design it, they design it, then you have an estimate of how much that might cost to bid that out, then you actually bid it, and your bids come in, and sometimes they're within your budget, sometimes they're not. And in that instance, it was well outside the budget that the town had. So we discussed this process with them, and then they were able to go through the build operate transfer process to then work with designer and contractor to get what the public works department needed, but also within budget. And they happen to not, with build operate transfer, you can use that as a financing mechanism also. So you can ask that developer to bring you bids from local banks as to what that financing might be, or you can go a traditional bond route. They decided to go the traditional bond route with the public works facility. We're also, something that some of you might pass on Highway 60 close to Sellersburg, it's called Camper and Crossing. You can see the narrow the lane there right before you get into the J.C. area where NDOT is putting in a traffic signal. Sellersburg recently completed a connection using the B.O.T. process from that area over to off of Charlestown Road where the coffee crossing and the Wendy's are. If you're familiar with that, before you get to McDonald's on Charlestown Road, they've made a connection from Highway 60 to that area with the signal. And they use that same process.
Probably an overpass?
No. The property, the road that's where that goes from 62 Charlestown Road is all vacant land back there. So what Sellersburg had hoped to do was to make that their new town center district, to hopefully move their town hall out that way and develop that area. So they built a roadway that way.
I think you're like everybody else, everybody's trying to get away from congestion.
Yes. And one of the advantages that we found for communities both working, well, another project, which I think you're talking to Commissioner Marshall, who might have some acquisition involved in this project that you're talking about. One that I've been working on directly is the New Albany Flood Control Project, where they've announced that they're doing their West Shoreline Project, where they're building a new boat ramp where the old recycling facility used to be. So flood control has used that process two separate times. One by Loop Island, where the old My Scratch and Dent, which is now on Eastern Boulevard in Clarksville, used to be located downtown New Albany, there's a pallet company back there, where they use that process to acquire the property, then demolish the buildings, seed and sod it, and then convey it back to Flood Control District. So they're using that right now on Floyd Street, down by the old recycling center, where we've assembled those properties, cleaned them up, seed, saw, demoed whatever was there, and now we're ready to convey that back to the Flood Control District. So there's a variety of ways that you can use that, depending on what your needs are. But you can roll financing and acquisition all into that same process.
So on the money situation, basically we're using somebody else's money to build our needs. And the end result is, if we, we understand it, if they don't do according to our specifications of what we needed to Highway Department, we could blatantly walk away at no expense.
There's a real life, recent example of that, too. So some of the advantages that I see from working, say, in the city of Charlestown or office versus the town of Sellersburg, is that it transfers that risk from new to developer. So if you put out an RFP to build a new highway park building or public works facility, what you would do is send out the RFP, you would ask for whatever services you needed. If that's just a developer, a designer, contractor, whether you also need financing, you'd ask for that. Then they would provide you a period of time, but they're going to scope that work out. They're going to get together and design it and say, this is what we think you can get, and this is how much we're going to, we're going to charge you for that X amount of price. So if they can't get it to work out within the budget that you have, say you have $2 million, they can't seem to get it to work out for that, or they can't deliver what they promised within the scoping period, then you don't have to move forward. If they can't get the rates that you need for your financing, you don't have to move forward. So all of that risk at that point in time is on that developer and that team, it's not on you.
Well, I think what we've just said and tried to figure with our budget, and it's been some thought, boots won't raise taxes, we're not going to do that. And we've set a guideline, what, according to Brad Isaac's, which is basically setting based on today's prices. And we're trying to beat inflation on top of that. And then we do have fuel tanks coming in. What do we do with the fuel tanks? And put them in there would be an extra cost and a waste. So what we're wanting to do from the councilman is keep you at rest in what we are, where we are, and try to proceed forward with what we're supposed to do. And according to that, the help will be our attorney on this, set us through the steps that we have to proceed, and that's where we are right now. But based on it, again, we, our deadline is the amount we figure not exceeding it, with no taxes being raised. I want to make that clear. But our hands are tied with the load that we've got. There's too much repair, we've got a danger issue with trucks in and out. We're like all the other counties around, we're one to get away from the population and still have easy access to it. So that's why, one thing I just wanted you to come up and show some points. And there is counties today using other people's money. And it's not our money at stake here right now.
I would say, Angela, you can speak further on this. I think one of the advantages that communities like using a B.O.T. is that guarantee maximum price, so there's no change orders, and once the community decides that they want to increase the scope. So that is the helpful part, as you're going through that scoping period, we're going to get a very clear number, and then anything that exceeds that, if it's not something that we are asking for, is eaten up by that risk is then on the developer. Jill, can you talk a little bit more about, say, we have other traditional projects that we do. It sounds like some of these other communities are using B.O.T. and their traditional projects that they do on a regular basis. Can you talk about what the advantages would be of using this build operate transfer process in other road projects or other projects like that, that we typically would interview ourselves or maybe seek outside funding?
Certainly. And something that I didn't finish before was the real life example of what happens if things don't work out the way you want it to. Floyd County was going through that process to relocate, you know, their, their services. Couldn't come to a solution on how to do that, and then that expired. And so they weren't on the hook for it. Some of the advantages and your normal processes, like I mentioned, there's been a lot of roadway projects, Commissioner Marshall mentioned, and we talked about this a little bit, South Clarksville, the redevelopment of Clarksville Building at Downtown, their new street grid there, between the river and the Colgate Plan. Clarksville's using this to do all of the roadwork down there, using B.O.T. process, even with their ready funds. So it has become more popular with roadwork. Scottsville used this to build their newest wastewater treatment plant. It's a 13, I think, $13 million project, they're using that. A lot of times you see it in fire stations, even park projects. And what people like about that is that guaranteed price, that risk transfer. You know that you have this amount of money, you want to deliver this project for this amount of money, and that guarantees that you're going to give that project for that amount of money. Do you go? I'm sorry.
Oh, no. Go ahead.
The, the other, I'm looking, I have a list of different types of advantages. But what happened on, using Clarksville as an example, they paid a designer to design that public works facility that was over budget. What they found useful in this B.O.T. process is they could work with the designer and the contractor and their people, which you don't get to do in a traditional bid process, to figure out economies of scale, or maybe this material would work for them, or maybe they want this, but they, they didn't realize that you could do it this way. And so they can work together to make sure, and they have an incentive to deliver that project for that guaranteed price. So they are going to work together to meet your budget. In some instances also, there's always contingency in there, which is good. So your guaranteed price would include some contingency on item. In some cases, that contingency, if it's not used, goes back to you.
There is bidding process, but it's to the builder itself and not to the county or not to the board or anybody else. But, I mean, like you said, they're under a timeframe to get it done, and that's what they have to work for. But again, it has to be according to our specifications.
Correct.
And I do know, what I've found out, talking to different ones, it started a long time ago in northern Indiana, it's moving south, and now it's starting to hit this area here, which is the great benefit when you're rolling money. And it gives us our needs, and we'll know what our needs are.
Yeah, and Jill, one thing, I think some of the, for this being a new process, I think one thing that might be helpful, if you could talk about the transparency, like the public process, talking about, you know, doing an RFP and making sure that, just talk about the public process of that in terms of, you know, typically when somebody thinks of a public-private partnership, they think that they're losing something in transparency. So can you talk more about how this is a public process and what that looks like for people responding perhaps to the RFPs?
Sure. There are various types of procurement processes. And in this type of project, you are used to a competitive seal bid process. The B.O.T. uses more of a qualify-based selection, where you're actually advertising to receive proposals, just like you would if you were doing professional services using government money, federal government money. And so you go through that process, it's advertised, people submit proposals to you based on what you're asking for. And just as an example, you might be asking for, you know, financing, design, and construction, all in one package. Then you establish, whether it's commissioners or the council, however you work that out, I haven't seen your B.O.T. resolution, so I'm not sure who has ultimate approval or say in that. But they can vary. And then you set up a committee, and the committee reviews those. It all goes back through public meetings, so then you say you select it somewhere to how you do with bidding process. And then there's a public hearing prior to, prior to signing this agreement with whoever you've chosen. So there's also a public hearing process. After that, then it can be as, everything should be open book, so that when draws are requested, then that, depending on how you're paying for that, either goes through a bank, or certain people would get that information, say the auditor would get the information prior to that. If somehow you've gotten money and you've, like in Charlestown, they're running that cash on hand, one of those, so that goes through the normal claims process, so people can see that. But it can be as, as open as you want it to be.
I have a question. So in Clark, Floyd County, how many contractors apply for this? How many, how many, how many are able to do this?
They have learned it, you know, people are used to a certain thing, you know, they're used to doing a competitive seal bids, and they're used to that. Some have come on board with this, and so they're now learning this process. It's almost a cultural change for them. But, and there are quite a few, and those that, that you would be familiar with, Matt Construction is a project in Sellersburg. Dan Christian, excavating, has done a lot of work in Clarksville. They're doing work in Charlestown, but they have a vested interest in Charlestown work because they're actually doing the development at Shadow Lake also. But there are a number of contractors and engineers that have come on board with this process.
So there is a little competition down there in those counties?
Yes.
And Jill, I would say they probably would be interested in applying even up here, am I right about that?
Yes. The other thing that I'll mention to you is the public works project in Clarksville, just sorry, keep using that as an example, but they already had a design. And in Sellersburg, they already had a design for the road. So they had to incorporate the engineering piece into that. And that team, if you have certain people you would like people to talk to, they certainly can talk to those people sometimes. Just for example, say, with the Wheatley Group submitted, but we're going to allow you to, or we're going to go out for bids individually to work with a contractor. We're not going to team up with a contractor. Or the county would like for us to talk to three different contractors and get bids from them. For our, and still, you still have a guaranteed price, but that's another way you can structure it. It leaves a little bit of flexibility, especially if there's someone that you've had already worked with as far as the design and some of those things, that they can team up and be a part of that.
Jill, Gerald coming. You've talked a lot about the advantages, and I think you're in a seat, in a position, that you can also talk about if there are any disadvantages to this. Now, we're, this, this arena is new to most of us here, that's why it's, and from all the information we're getting is so much helpful. I appreciate commissioners, you know, actually to come up. Because you answered a lot of questions before they were even asked, so that's, that's what it's all about. But can you talk in any way about the disadvantages that are possibly out there with this?
I'm sure I regret saying this at some point, but at least in my experience in the last three years, I haven't seen any disadvantages to using this. And please understand that my experience mainly has come from your side, working with you on your side. So working on, either with private developers and communities somewhat on the same side, then I always look, still look through things on the lens of, how does that affect you? As a council member, how's it affect commissioners and the bottom line? And from that, there's really just upside because you have control and the risk is somewhere else. And so to me, that's an advantage for you. My disadvantage?
I thought you'd be in a seat to know if that worked.
I, you know, knock on wood, I just haven't, and I'm sure I regret saying this, but I haven't. The disadvantage is on the people who submit, because they have to guarantee that price, and it's on them if that, if the price of asphalt goes up, which it did recently, you're doing a road project, then they've got to take that on the chin, and they're not coming back to you and asking you for more money.
I would, I would also add to, I would also add to that local issues are, could be a disadvantage to doing this, so it could hold up the process. When Jill's talking about on the development side, how it can be more, you know, not advantageous to the development side. If you don't have your local issues worked out ahead of time, it can prolong the scoping period, which, while you don't have to pay the scoping fee upfront, it will be the cost that your designers have to spend designing the building, your contractor spends, like changing the scope of work, if your scoping period is extended, you will eventually pay that. So I think that's not always communicated very clearly within the B.O.T. process. But if you don't have consensus among the local community of the direction, the budget range, that can really add up in cost. And while it's not, I think that's the part where it's not as transparent, because it's usually sold as there's no risk in the scoping period. But if you as a local community, if we as a local community extend that scoping period, we don't have consensus, we're really billing ourselves more money by the end of the project.
And I just definitely agree with that. You don't want to go into this process unless you know exactly what you want to do. And I don't even have it all designed exactly, but have a clear scope in mind. As you said, you have a budget in mind. Don't go down this road until you know all of those things, because it will cost you more at the end. It'll be guaranteed, but it'll cost you more. Guaranteed price, like I was.
You know, that development team, as they, that development?
As soon as they put together that guaranteed maximum price, fills in their risk. So, you know, though we might not have the risk, we also don't have the benefits of having any savings that they might have. But in most of those processes, in the open book style, then you'll know what those profit centers are, you'll know what that is. So you, that will, which in a competitive bid, you don't necessarily know what those things are. But it should, if you use somebody that wants to be transparent and show you those things, then you'll know what those things are.
Well, that's what we've done with, I commend Rick Wells at the Highway Department, knowing basically what we've got down, based on the footage of our needs, and trying to project where we're going to be. And Brad Isaac's, which we brought in to you at the last meeting, and he's on the table with us already, he does our bridges, he is an engineer. So we had bridges, and all we could do was base our prices on today's prices with square footage of what we're going to build. And based on all that, we're trying to get all the numbers so there's no hidden surprises. We're trying to cut all the corners so we don't do chain orders, we do not want. We want everything upfront, knowing where we are, facing where we are. And basically, right now, and I'll be honest with you, we're looking to hold under 4 million. And you have the numbers in front of you, I'm about that. If we can maintain that, we went through the jail project a few years back, and it started out at about six million, and ended up at nine million. We went through that, and we don't want to go there. But what does scare us is 18% inflation is what they're talking about, and we want to have that off the bucket and try to get where our needs are. We know we need the building, we know we got to do something. When we do it, I don't know if there's a perfect time. I don't see prices coming down. But all I can use is somebody else's money can do it rather than ours. And it's never a greedy way to be, but it's where we are.
Jill, can you talk about, you said you're mainly representing communities as they go through this. Can you talk about the Wheatley Group's experience and what your role would be, either in advisement to the local community or as part of the development team? Can you kind of talk about what those options look like?
Sure. We've been involved in a variety of capacities, some are just suggesting and talking about B.O.T., and we're not involved in any of that, after the fact. In Charlestown and in Sellersburg, we worked on behalf of the city and the town to help them through the process, work with who they've chosen, keep track of the project, just normal things we would do, as functioning as redevelopment staff for them. We've also led a team, prior to me joining the Wheatley Group, the Charlestown Police Station, that was actually led by the Wheatley Group as the general contractor per se, manager. And we've been, worked with a certain guy named Greg Marks, the GM Development, to work on flood control projects. So I was the one contacting people assembling the project. So we can be in a variety of different roles there. We're looking more to, in some instances, especially if we're not under contract with a community, then if Greg's involved, then a lot of times we'll help with project management here, just to save some wind and tear on him.
On the development side?
So we, we function in a variety of ways. And it just depends on our relationship with the community in Clarksville one. We, we work with them on certain things, but we weren't directly involved in that. We just kind of helped guide the process and, you know, paid attention to it, but we weren't directly involved or we weren't submitting as part of the, the process.
And council, do you have any more questions for Jill? Thank you, I appreciate it. Jill, you have anything else in regards to the B.O.T. project?
Not at this time. We're still working on it.
Yes, good.
And we just want to keep you at rest in where we are. Nobody in fact is anywhere. Any questions? So as a council, we really, we've sat through these meetings, and we've discussed this B.O.T. three times. I've been to, this is my fifth meeting. Three of them for sure have been about this. Are any of us aware of what we are willing to spend on this meeting? Can you dig the numbers? I mean, is the $4 million? I don't know how to ask a question. Can you help me run down anything? I mean, what do we?
I think that's a need for what?
I understand it.
I mean, just like, just like you said, there's no good time to do this. I, I just want to see what the, the funds that we're pulling together here, if it does affect the other agencies or the other departments in the county, how they affect this on that, that's something that I'm worried about. My thing is, as long as we're not raising taxes, and we can afford to do that, it's not going to affect, it's going to make.
I don't, I just, I don't, and I agree, Rick took me on a tour out there, and it is, it's a jungle. It's a mess. I agree totally. But I know that we're, you know, are we yet, have we begun into a recession? Have we started a recession? Do we go spend this money? And, and then we lay people off a year and a half, two years later? You know, I, I want to protect the county workers, and I want to make sure it's due on their table before we go this far. That's all I'm saying.
I have another one.
Me, I?
That's been Crystal Walt.
I know, well, I know.
Jill, I can, at least where I feel like I'm at, and each council member can speak for themselves, I think it takes, this takes more investigation of sitting down in the auditor's office and really saying, like, where is this money coming from? They see it day in and day out, like really trying to get a comfortability. And I would suggest that every council member do that individually, to try to get an idea of what your ballpark, what your comfort level is, so that we can have a more open discussion about that. Because I don't, I don't think at this point in time... Because I don't, I don't think at this point in time, at least for me, I don't feel comfortable saying, here's a dollar amount that I think we can go out and spend. I'd like to spend more time investigating those numbers myself and also talking to the auditor's office about where they see it coming from as they are able to have just such a, you know, a really close tie to that. So, that's what I would recommend before we have an open discussion about full dollar figure.
Sure. They're not the one they're getting, are they?
We ordered to be here, Bill, they're supposed to be here in March or April. March or April of next year?
No, this year.
Well, this, we're in May already.
Yeah, that's when they're supposed to come in. So, they're due, we've been fighting the same thing with everything, Joe. I mean, it's, you had the same thing where you wanted, I think too. And, but we knew that tanks was the main problem. But then we started developing all these other things and then our building itself. And we had to evaluate it. And there was no appraisal value on our building. That's the bad part. So, what do we do? Do we still spend more money into it and keep patching? I agree with what you say, inflation scares the heck out of me too. But I'm also working with the jail project and I've seen that and I've seen the cost. When I was on the school board, I seen the same thing in Peking. What we started out at four million down there costs nine million. I don't like spending money. I don't like raising taxes. We're not going to raise taxes. That's why we started looking for numbers or where we could break up money to get what we need. Will it be 100% complete when it's done? Maybe not. It depends on what that number goes to. If we do it with the V O T and this is work like Jill explained, and I've talked to different counties and different, and different agencies, and everybody today is using their money, not your money. But at the same time, to proceed forward, we didn't go out far as engineer to draw what we needed. We went with an engineer we already had. Is it a confirmed thing? And he's getting prices from two or three different, so that we can come to you with that four million dollar number? And when I say four million, it may not be four million, it may be under four. I don't know. But we're not going to fuck four million because we have, we got that money that we can use. Nobody's going to lay nobody off. It don't do, do it late, 26 or 13, highway people off to shove snow and have a building.
That's what I'm doing.
We're not doing that. We're trying to provide for the county to give the best thing. Every year, we get calls in the winter time, my road is not clean. I can't get to work. We hear that. We've had floods in the past five years quite a bit, every year. The ash poured, knocked more trees down than any snow or rain or tornadoes did. And our drivers ever storm dredge a snow or a windstorm because our drivers have to go out and clear roads. No, we're not going to do nothing. We're not here to hurt the county. We're here to work with you to keep you abreast of what we're facing. And with facing this, we have to know some answers. Because the end result is, okay, we go to the trouble and the aggravation and the engineering and the proposals and the bid and the open bid to come to subject it. We don't want a no answer to him. We're not putting responsibility on you, we're not putting no more on us. But at the same time, we know what we're facing out there. This isn't the only problem this county's going to face. And we're thinking about that down the road. What's our next adventure that's going to come at us? We don't know.
And you're right, that's right. You don't know.
But you came for dead future. And I commend you on your concern of the question you asked, and it's a good question. We're faced with the same thing. But we can't stop at this point. Now, with what we showed you the best we can, with the way we can work it, we can do it.
So, just to kind of summarize, Phil, you and the commissioners feel that four million dollar budget is the cap amount and you feel like that is reasonable based on estimates that you've had gathered by our on-call engineer?
We went to Carolyn Michelle and we pulled everything we could pull.
So, you, you feel like that's a reasonable cost estimate to build it and also feel that's what we have the capacity to do at the county level? Based on the funds that you looked at, we could?
Based on what the numbers are today, that's what we can do. If we wait a year, you can throw that four million dollars away. We're on that deadline.
I think that's helpful. You know, we do have budgeting coming up in the next.
Why is it a deadline?
Fuel, fuel tanks.
Fuel tanks.
We got to get the fuel tanks on the ground.
Well, I'll just reiterate this too. I think that that's something to, the council will not be pressured on the fuel tank deadline. I think this is something that is, we understand that that's an issue, but that is something, and we understand the time sensitivity, but that will not sway the speed of the decision. I do want to make sure that every council member is comfortable with the decision and not making a decision too early based on the fuel tanks. We know it's a problem, we recognize that, and I think all of us are taking that into consideration, but that will not be the deadline for this project.
I've got one question. The contractor, whoever that may be, will work with the commissioners on the location. See, that's going to be very important, the location.
Location itself's got to be based on what's best for the county. And yes, I mean, wouldn't be likely to say we wasn't looking at ground. Now, some place that would make a good ideal situation, have we picked a location? No. Have we talked to anybody about it? No. But we aren't looking at location. And the benefit of the county was our best with our fuel tanks and everything there.
But you'll be working with the contractor on that.
The developer.
The developer, the one that was selecting and drafting.
Well, that may be my concern.
One thing about when you say we're not based on fuel tanks, and we're not trying to hold you hostage, but you've got to realize FEMA is holding us hostage. They've already told us our tanks have to get out. We will pay for the expense of those tanks. Can you operate a highway department without fuel tanks? No. Now, we've been forced to one thing. If COVID done anything for us, when we were told our tanks are outdated. But COVID hit, that did say it. Because at this point, they haven't pulled the trigger on, we want their tanks out. Every gas station in this county, everybody that's got a fuel tank is held hostage by that. And we are too. So, if they come up and tell us, we will take our tanks out. And our question is, what do we do? We talked about looking on top of the ground. That don't work with what you're going to water the gas. You know that, hard fuel.
Well, I'll just reiterate, I know the council will not vote to make a four million dollar decision based off of the fuel tanks. So, I think it's.
Rick, are they leaking?
No.
They're not leaking.
Now, the 30-year warranty is up, so they're up to more scrutiny. And what we're going to run into, last year's $10,000, they're going to nickel and dimers to death on them until they make us remove them. There's a lot of standards that have been improved over the years and now they're wanting to bring those up to standard and there's no way to do it. So, basically, you're going to look at $10,000 to $20,000 a year until they make you take them out.
So, so far?
Yeah, yeah, basically.
Well, I want, in light of all the restrictions, I guess it will be, has been posted on us. Has there been any, and you probably, the kid probably know more about this than anybody else. Is there any money, monies out there that would, could be directed toward, any federal monies that be directed toward our situation, especially with fuel tanks? Because if the federal mandate is to do something with fuel tanks, I mean, they throw the money away in Washington, what? We got everything in the world, you know? So, I mean, I'm saying that there's possibility with the restrictions and the, maybe some of the deadlines that we're talking about, maybe there's some help out there with those.
We've already paid for the fuel tanks through federal money.
Okay, thank you, Tom, I appreciate that. I'm new on the council list.
I am.
And you, in one of the meetings, I think, might not the last meeting, but you had some numbers. I know they were, they were not concrete numbers, but you had some numbers that, like, could you briefly take a minute, present all the numbers?
Numbers on what?
The amount of money that we might have set aside or could be set aside for this project.
Oh.
Yeah, you asked about that.
Did you get that right now?
Yes, I got that.
Okay, all right. If you take a gander at that real quick.
Yes. Just briefly.
Our money, the CAGIT fund, which has been, well, if you want to call it dead, but they're way with CAGIT, two more back in, what, 17, I think? Those, those funds from that. The riverboat funding, a little bit out of that. The nice thing about riverboat funding is it does replenish itself every year. That amount fluctuates anywhere between $250,000 and $400,000 a year. I did a little research here recently on riverboat funding because there's always someone out here saying, well, what if, what if, what if that goes away? And then, you know, we're relying on this, on this money and the state's taking it away. They're not going to take it away. There would be such a public outcry from the 92 counties of this state if that was taken away. There would probably be people trying to burn down the state now. So, even if they did, they, they would be obligated to replace it with something. So, it's not going away. And in addition to that, the gaming industry is actually ticking up again since COVID got over. So, so this stream of funding, I think we can certainly rely on to do with, as we see fit. So, basically, looking at the paper again, you know, you, you've got almost half, well, you've got right at half of the total amount of the four, that four million dollar projects that we have readily available to us, if you want to call it a down payment. Of course, the more you can put down upfront, the less you're going to have to pay out over the years. And these are, these are rough figures. So, roughly $270,000 that would be coming from edit. This is what we intended on making the payments for, for what, five, six years? Five years, five years? And then about $500,000 balloon at the end. Okay, now, I recall the last meeting, Commissioner Walker, Commissioner, Councilman Walker, you had mentioned balloon and how, well, you know, people say balloon payment. Some people freak out, think, oh my gosh, what's going to happen? Is the sky calling? You know, what's this balloon payment going to be? You have to understand now, there will be a not to exceed or a, you know, there would be a maximum amount before anything is done or anything is signed. Naturally, you'll have to read fine print, but don't be, don't be so concerned about this balloon payment because there will be a maximum amount. It's not like, well, today I signed the papers, the balloon payment's $560,499.44. And in the end of six years, the balloon payment's $700,000. That's not the way it's going to be. We're not going to make, we're going to make sure that doesn't happen because for one thing, banks can only raise interest rates so much a year anyway. I think it's a half a percent. But all that's in the contract. So, whatever these numbers end up being, you can make darn sure that they will not exceed these numbers.
Hey, Tom, I have a question about the numbers from the ceded amount that you have, you know, each year. You had mentioned in a prior meeting that the commissioners were looking at a way to reduce the number of miles of paving to be able to cover some of these payments. Would that, is that what you're talking about here? Or is that, was that a different way to come up with some funding?
Well, we, we do need to restructure the ceded from, like to do it from 85, 15% to 75, 25, which asphalt running about, what is it, $70,000 a mile or something?
Yeah, probably 68 right now.
68. So, you know, we're only talking about two and a half, you know, three miles of road, which we wouldn't even consider had it not been for the community crossings money. We couldn't do it if it wasn't for that. And there's no indication that's going away either.
So, you have a plan to make this work within your existing, within the existing, I mean, but within that existing ceded budget, that existing edit budget, you have a plan to be able to use this $270,000 each year? Like to reduce your expenses so that you can pull that out for the budget?
Yes. We have been, we've been working pretty hard on it.
Yes, well, you can tell. And I will, I just want to say thank you to the commissioners for, one, bringing the V O T, bringing the V O T opportunity in front of us, paying attention to the committees around us to really look at how to save money. And most of the commissioner/council relationships I hear about are not the commissioners trying to save by the way to pay for things. So, I appreciate that. And thank you for spending your time looking at our existing budget to see where we could pull it from so that it would not hurt the other departments within the county. So, I really want to thank you. And it sounds like Gerald would agree with me on that.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I would like to say one other thing. Joe, you had mentioned earlier, what if, what if, what if? Well, it kind of reminds me of cutting hay, you know, there's a 30% chance of rain the next three days. Should I cut hay or not? Well, I want to think for sure, hay's not going to dry, can't get failed till it's cut. So, if you look at Capitol comments, if you guys, and maybe some of you do, for the past year, there have been some pleasant surprises in what's been going on in the state. And I think it, I think it reminds us that even though, even though things are bad sometimes in this country, a lot of times due to where the state of Indiana is, you know, we call it the crossroads of America, sometimes we're a little bit more immune to these economic downturns than a lot of states. I think we're very fortunate in that respect. But if you read the latest Capitol comments, they're projecting the state of Indiana is going to have a $1.5 billion additional, more money in addition to what they even thought. And all indicators say that, you know, they're not looking for recession. They're actually looking for the economy to start picking up.
But that's a prediction.
Oh, that's right. That's not to say it couldn't happen. But I do know one thing for sure. Next year, materials, labor, due to inflation and just the way things are, will be increasing 12 to 20%. I'd rather have that 12, 20% in my pocket. I'd rather have to go ahead and move forward with this. We've got a rough plan on the numbers and how we're going to come up with the money. There is certainly a need. No one can argue that.
I agree, Tom.
So, I think I told you a long time ago, you asked me sometimes about making decisions and sometimes are tough. And I think I told you that as long as you lay your head on your pillow at night and sleep peaceful sleep and dream peaceful dreams, then everything's all right. So, that's, that's all we ask of any of you, you know? This is a need. We've got a plan. We're still working on it. And our intention is to move forward with this with your help.
So, what I'd like to ask council members to do is between now and next month's meeting, please take a look at those numbers that the commissioners have provided with us. Please reach out to the auditor's office to verify the information and just to see if there's anything else that we might be missing. And then let's have that dollar amount conversation that Joe was talking about. Let's talk about that at the next meeting. So, I would like everyone to do your investigation so we can start talking about what is the comfortability with the council for a budget like that? Does that sound like something everyone can do?
You like?
Yes.
I mean, no disrespect to this, but how long have we been talking about this? Three months or longer?
Never been, never been.
Never been. You get it on a bit. Okay. Latest in the auditor's office? The commissioners have come up with this. And I think you're going to find the same thing if you go to their office. This is what you're going to have. So, I don't think putting it off is going to save us a dime. Matter of fact, I think it's going to hinder us and the end result.
Well, respectfully, Rick, I've been on the project development side of this. And when this consensus is not generated before you venture into an agreement with a developer, this question? this questioning, not being fully on board will cost us more money. So I wanted us to do things a bit differently in this community where we are. Council is fully supportive of the project before moving forward. So I think having these numbers in front of us, having that time to talk to the orders office would be helpful.
I'm looking for, I'm looking for something really wise to say this time. And I, I would have it, I can appreciate all the work that the commissioners done. I would not be, in light of everything that I've heard in prior meetings as a, and especially yesterday, I would have no problem moving forward with the project. I think the commissioners need some type of consensus from each committee, or council, council person. So that's, I think that's where I'm at now. I'd like to get, ask for consensus from, just consensus from.
Are you comfortable with that, Gerald, being able to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the.
Yeah, Preston.
All right. If we come to your office, nothing is gonna change, probably. Then, look, we got here now. Yeah.
Michelle?
Michelle, well, you can. Michelle, I'd like to hear from Michelle.
Well, I mean, yes, other than the riverboat, that is not.
Let's not bring up the only, the only question I got is the riverboat.
Yeah, that's the only.
Yeah, but, sorry, what'd you say, Karen?
If riverboat was to be taken away, that's not a state decision, that's a county decision. So Harrison County ever decided to take that away, that varies in the state. That's the only thing.
Yeah.
And still seven years out, is that right? Or six years out of that balloon payment?
Not long as there's a riverboat, we're probably gonna be okay. Maybe, maybe.
Okay, so does the council feel that they can provide consensus at this point in time?
Well, you got my opinion.
Okay, all right, we'll start over.
Yeah, I mean, I think we, we know there's a need. Our concern is just to, the longer we wait, the more it's gonna cost us. We know that with inflation, cost of materials, cost of everything goes up. I see it my business. Most of you do in the things that you do. Everything's going up. You go to the river, you retire. If we wait, then it's just, I agree, it's gonna cost us more money. So on the, you know, on that side of it, I think I would be ready to move forward. You know, I trust these guys. I think they, they worked their tails off to try to be frugal with the county's money. And I don't think it's a situation where we can continue to wait just with where we're at on the building we currently have, the tanks. All these things are gonna have to be done at some point in time. And if we continue to grab our feet, then next year, we'll be talking about five or six million dollars instead of four million dollars. You know, from what I can see and from what I verified through that, we do have about two million dollars here that we can use. So, you know, that leaves us financing the other two if we come in at four million. You know, I think it's something that, that we're gonna have to do. As long as we don't have to raise taxes, I'm good with it.
Yeah. And that's like too, what Rick was saying there, we're paying ten to twenty thousand penalty every year. That's, that's a.
Yeah, I don't, I wasn't worried about that.
Gerald, do you have any more comments? Okay, Joe?
No, all right.
Okay. Joe, in terms of where you sit on this project moving forward, what's your consensus?
I agree that it needs to be done. I believe it needs to be done. And I'm fine with the idea, and I'm fine with commissioners, their figures. Their figures are, you know, probably spot on or close. Hopefully, they're close. I'm okay with it. I'm just gonna say I'm okay with it.
Okay, right there.
Well, for the whole scheme of the county, I think there's some other issues we're gonna have to address if we receive the funds, there's no doubt in my mind. The only thing that I am worried about, and that's why I asked the ladies here, was the riverboat fund, it's not guaranteed. And I don't know the ins and outs of the riverboat fund. I just know that at any given time, they can cease to, those payments. But that's something I'd like to see, that, and I'm okay with moving forward. This, this year doesn't make me uncomfortable, but there's some other aspects of the county that does. So by moving forward with this, would you, then, throw me the rest of the issues, which I'm not prepared to talk about today?
Preston.
I was just gonna say, I'd like to see the riverboat fund to maintain a balance enough to cover this if at all possible. Or once we get to that point where that money is there for the, for the balloon payment. If I could interrupt you then. There is two point one billion, give or take, in the riverboat fund. So we're not going to.
Deplete it?
Deplete it, that's my fault, Todd. I thought I saw two hundred and something thousand. I must have saw two point something million. Two million one third thousand.
All right, anything else? Preston?
No, after I see these figures here, I'm more comfortable with it.
Okay, I also agree. I think this is a worthwhile project. And I, again, would like to reiterate just the effort and the intentionality the commissioners have put forth towards this effort. I don't think it's common across the state. So I just thank you again for not only bringing the B O T opportunity to the community, but doing your investigation and taking a look at the budget to see how we can make this work. And I think there's no question that this is a need. And I'm in full support of the project and want to help in any way that I can.
Well, I do have to say, I commend the council. And it is better working with you than working against you. And trust me, we don't think doing this is, but I don't like spending any money we have to and we know it's gotten. And it's hard getting money out of that pool there.
And I'm for that, yes, I'm for that.
And trust me, they watch your numbers just as much as ever.
Oh, yeah.
But I thank everyone for your service.
Thank you.
That'd feel better, and then we can start moving forward.
And I'm not sure that the council has to make a formal, a formal motion, you know, in terms, or action. I do think that'll come later in the process. So this is something where this gives the commissioners kind of the green light to go ahead and move forward.
Yeah, that's my thought, excuse me.
Yeah, go ahead.
That was my thought. The commissioners can't be there. They can't be denied here to move forward.
Well, I would say, you know, can we not make a motion and vote to let them go ahead with the B O T process?
I think we have to.
We don't have to?
Uh, Michelle, is that something where we might need a motion? Or do we want to make that a formal, formal action?
I don't think at this point you have to.
Yeah, let's, with, with John not here, let's not make that, let's not make that formal.
But can I ask you, you know, if we have to make a motion at this point, or it's down the road?
She's not going to give us legal advice on this either. We will, we will wait. Yeah, we will wait. So with that, commissioners, you have, you've talked to each of us. We have each had the same, same sentiment in terms of giving you the green light to move forward. When there is formal action required, please come back to us to let us know. As you've put together that request for proposal and you draft that, I would like to ask that you consider at least one member of the council on that scoping. Okay, two members of the council on that scoping committee. Because you'll have to have a selection committee and a scoping committee. So I just ask that the council is continue to stay involved in that process, and we'll help in whatever way we can. Anything else?
We'll need the council's blessing to cut loose the money.
Yeah, you will, in terms of entering into the formal B O T agreement, which comes after the scoping, scoping period, you will need the council to approve that. So that'll be, that'll be after you've already worked with the developer. You've selected the developer. No, I think this has been a really good process. And honestly, having seen local issues really derail a project, I'm really grateful that we've spent. I know it's been frustrating on the commissioner end to just have patience with the council. But thank you because I think this makes it a lot easier of a process moving forward. All right, anything else? Do you have anything else on your agenda?
Nope, thank you.
Okay, we don't need your audience. Yes, Jenny?
Um, I had, on Friday morning, fifth, at ten AM, Governor Hope will be in Salem for the South, the Moon and South Celebration. The D N R contacted us for invitation, like invitation-only people. So county council, county commissioner, city council, city officials were invited. But I'm putting that out to the public. The D N R said it's open to public. And there'll only be pictures of the dignitaries. But Friday morning at ten AM at the Depot Railroad Museum, Governor Hope will be there. He will speak, the new Albany mayor will speak, our mayor will speak, and the D N R, head of D N R will speak. So if you'd like to go, it'll only be about a half an hour long, to forty minutes possibly.
Thank you. Anyone else?
City election's tomorrow. Nine towns. And the.
Go on to your office.
My office and the courts are in order. We will be shut down, and only functioning for the election.
Okay, any comments from the council? Commissioners, anything? All right, yeah, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I've got one from Mondale. Second from Gerald. All is the favor, please raise your right hand. All right, adjourn. Thank you.